Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order with the clerk call the roll to establish a quorum.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan, Councilmember Tao, Mayor Protem Talamontes, Councilmember Valenzuela, Vice Mayor Maple, Councilmember Guetta, Councilmember Jennings, Councilmember Vang, and Mayor Steinberg.
I am here. I have Councilmember Valenzuela, if you would please lead us in the landing acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. Please rise if you are able for the opening acknowledgements in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nisanan people, the Southern Maidu, Valley and Plains Miwok, Putwan-Wintune peoples, and the people of the Wiltun Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather together today in the act of practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous peoples' history, contributions, and lives. Thank you. Now, please salute and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. We do have a consent calendar and then several items, including looking at the operating budget for the Sacramento Employment and Training Agency. And why don't we begin now with the consent calendar? Are there items that members would like to be taken up separately or voted on separately?
I'll move consent.
I'll second.
We've got a tie for second.
I'll third.
And let's hear from the public, please.
I have one speaker, Marjorie Dickinson, on item two.
Thank you, councilmembers and mayor. I'm Marge Dickinson. I am chair of the Measure U Community Advisory Committee, and I want to thank the members of the PPE committee and the city clerk and her staff for their comprehensive, thoughtful, and responsive efforts to refine boards and commissions' policies, and the PPE committee memberships for their leadership in moving forward many important changes, most notably to allow ad hoc committees and to clarify policies and practices with respect to commissioner vacancies and term extensions. We have one remaining concern with respect to quorums. The staff and committees, quote, "concerned that having a quorum be less than a simple majority of authorized seats could cause confusion and is not in keeping with the city's transparency mission," close quote, does not take into account the challenges in meeting the quorum requirements that commissions with unfilled seats face. Instead, establishing a quorum as a majority of filled seats would allow commissions such as the Measure U Community Advisory Committee, which has had persistent vacancies of 25% or more of our authorized membership for most of this year, including a period where we had six vacancies, would allow us to continue to provide support and service to the council and community. In order to solve the confusion and transparency issues, the agenda for each meeting could include language that states, "This commission has X authorized seats, of which Y are currently filled. Therefore, the quorum for this meeting is a majority of Y." And at the beginning of each meeting, the clerk could announce the same information. Appreciate your consideration of this suggestion. Open to questions.
Madam Clerk, do you have a response to that?
Absolutely. So, we did take this item to the PPE committee, and they unanimously voted that a quorum be a majority of the members of the commission, of the legislative body.
So...
Just to clarify, our commission disagrees with that because it has been difficult at points in this year to achieve a quorum because we've had so many vacancies on our commission.
Well, shouldn't there be a differentiation? If there has been a full plot of appointments, then makes sense to have the quorum be a full commission, but if it's our responsibility/fault for not having appointed a full commission, why should we hold up the commission's work? Please, help me.
If I may, just communicate on behalf of my colleagues at PPE with their indulgence about the discussion we had. Definitely was very much in support of the recommendation that Marjorie is making. However, with the reinstating of the ad hoc committees, it raised important Brown Act questions of whether or not we would incidentally end up violating Brown Act when we had the ad hocks established if we lowered the quorum. It felt like there's changes being made also in those orders to how the appointments are being made to almost every commission. I think definitely appreciate the chair's concerns, but we're trying to thread a balanced needle here with reinstating the ad hocks.
I guess the ad hoc is the workaround here. So, the old ad hocks...
And I will concur. That was basically the discussion, where we looked at it, but there would be conflicts between the two. So, you can't have it one way. So, we figured it was easier, consistent with exactly how council operates and our subcommittees operate. Since we expanded to ad hocks, we needed to have a clear delineation between the two.
Do you want to respond to that?
I don't understand the connection between ad hocks. It sounds like it would mean that if we don't have a quorum, we could reconstitute ourselves on the fly as an ad hoc. I just don't understand the relationship between ad hocks and quorum for this, but...
Maybe we should talk about it a little bit more offline. Appreciate it. Okay.
Appreciate your consideration.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Very good. The consent calendar is moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, oppose, abstain. Consent calendar passes. Let's get to the main item, which is item 16, which is the SETA Operating Budget for Fiscal Year 2425.
Councilmembers, my name's Anita Maldonado, and I serve as SETA's executive director. And I'm here to present to you a little bit about the work that SETA does, including the budget today. I'd like to begin by first thanking the mayor and Councilmember Guetta for visiting us at the National League of Cities last week at SETA. We really appreciate your support. So, I have my SETA team here and available to answer any questions after today's presentation. So, I'd like to begin by just an overview of what I'll be speaking about today, including SETA's overview and board governance, our strategic planning efforts, fiscal overview, a little bit about our departments, including our Head Start program, workforce development efforts, and then a little bit about our future goals at SETA. So, in terms of our agency overview and board governance, SETA is... Well, first of all, let me begin by saying this is our mission. We build self-sufficiency by addressing a totality of needs, from education and training to childcare and more. And we start with our mission because it really identifies who we are and what we do. We are in the process of strategic planning, and so we're in the process of also revamping our mission and vision statements to better clarify the work that we do because we do so much, and we're such a uniquely structured agency, that we want to make sure that our vision and our mission statements really demonstrate that. So, SETA is a joint exercise of power agreement, or JPA, established in 1978 and administered by the SETA governing board. The SETA governing board is comprised of locally elected officials, two by Sacramento County Board of Supervisors, from which supervisors Rich Desmond and Patrick Kennedy serve, two by Sacramento City Council members, which our governing chair is Councilmember Mai Vang, and Councilmember Eric Guetta, and then one public representative by the name of Sophia Sherman. There are actually three other boards that help guide SETA's mission. First, our Sacramento Works Board, which is a volunteer board acting in advisory capacity to the governing board on matters pertaining to employment, social service programs, and finance. Secondly, the Head Start Policy Council, or PC, is comprised of Head Start parents and community members and act as decision and policymaking capacity. The PC acts as a link to parent committees, grantee, and delegate agency bodies, public and private organizations for the communities that they serve. And then, thirdly, the Community Action Board, representing public, private, and low-income interests in the community. SETA is a designated community action agency for Sacramento County, and it has the goals of helping low-income individuals and families secure the opportunities that they need to become self-sufficient. Next slide, please. From its inception, SETA has been an effective force in connecting people to jobs, business owners to quality employees, education and nutrition to children, assistance to refugees, and hope to many Sacramento-area residents. SETA has the Head Start Early Head Start grantees with a total of 112 Head Start Centers countywide, in partnership with five delegates and two partners. SETA also operates 38 Head Start-operated centers. Additionally, SETA is the local American Job Center of California AJCC operator and administers the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act in 15 centers countywide, with a variety of discretionary programs and in partnership with 110 subcontractors. SETA has a total of 577 employees, a budget just shy of $142 million, where the county is our treasure of fact, and SETA is considered a special district. You can see here by the map, there's district and county presence. The red dots signify our Head Start, early Head Start Centers, and the blue dots signify our American Job Center locations. As I indicated in my welcoming remarks, SETA is embarking in its first-ever agency strategic plan. We've been engaged with our consultant, Dahlberg Partners, to engage in a comprehensive 12-week process for SETA. And this is just an infographic of the phases that we have engaged in so far, which was kickoff, situation assessment, and diagnostic. Right now, we're in phase three, which is the strategy development piece of the work that we're doing. And then, we hope to move on here very quickly to phase four. The methodology that our strategic plan encompasses includes a multi-pronged approach, including interviews with different stakeholders, benchmarking with similar or like organizations, and then also surveying of stakeholders, including staff and partners. And we're also doing much desk research, document, and review. And we took... Our consultants took all of that information and compiled that information and came up with three main areas, priority areas, for our strategic plan. Those strategic initiatives include and includes three areas: awareness, cohesion, and partnerships. What we learned from the surveys is that we keep hearing that SETA is the best-kept secret, and we don't want to be a secret anymore after almost 48 years of service. We want people to know about us. Therefore, we want to increase our footprint. We hired a public information officer to help to increase that with social media, and we want to make sure that we engage through our website design, our new logo design, increase SETA's presence throughout the community. The second area is cohesion. We realize that in order for us to move forward, we want to make sure that the culture of the teams are working well, that we identify synergies interdepartmentally to break down some of the silos and really kind of operate as one organization. And then, finally, we want to make sure that we intentionally work with our partners and our subrecipients. We'll go straight into the fiscal overview. As I said, we're just shy of $142 million. SETA is 100% grant-funded, and we have two main departments. We have the Children and Family Services Department, which takes up 70% of our budget, and then Workforce Development, which encompasses 30%. And the expenditures by category are listed here, where most of the funding going to subrecipients and client obligations, followed by salaries and fringes, operating costs, and then fixed assets. Now, this is the Children and Family Services Department, which is comprised of just shy of $100 million. And you'll see here a breakdown of all of our funding here to the left, and then how that funding looks like in terms of salaries and fringes, our delegates and partners, our fixed assets, and operating cost. This is the breakdown for workforce development, all of our funding sources here, and then the budget expenditures by category. Now, just a little bit about Head Start, as SETA is the Head Start grantee for Sacramento County. And this is a view of our five delegates and our operated programs, and it's broken down by our enrollment with early Head Start and Head Start. And in partnership, we serve more than 4,000 infant toddlers in preschools countywide, and collectively, we employ more than 1,400 early learning employees. We have three main... We do lots in Head Start and Early Head Start, but really under three main pillars. We have specific curriculums, intervention services, and learning environments that really promote early learning. We have a family engagement portion of the work that we do to connect to the full family and to provide them the supports that they need for the whole family. And then, we also provide health and nutrition services for the children that we serve. We are guided by the federal government administration for children and families, where they just released a final rule in the Federal Register. We get them in the form of performance standards. I understand performance standards, really, the changes come probably about once a decade, but these just came down here recently. And the changes to the policy, including integrating more mental health supports across program services, strengthening processes to support child health and safety, enhancing family engagement services, modernizing the process programs used to identify and meet community needs, and also increase wages for benefits and benefits for educators. And in these performance standards, they've given us from six months to up to seven years to integrate these changes to our policy. Now, in terms of workforce development, as I said, we have over 13 centers. I believe I said 15 centers, job centers through Sacramento Works programs, numerous partnerships. But I think what's important in this slide is that we really work with the hardest-to-serve. We work with those who have 90% or higher significant barriers, including special populations, people with disabilities, people experiencing homelessness, and foster youth. This is the most recent annual program information that we have, and it's expressed here in this infographic, which talks about the number of individuals helped, our return on investment, those employed, our average earnings, and barriers to employment. And we really make sure that we try to keep these metrics so that we can improve upon them from year to year. Additionally, we operate additional special populations over here to the right, which include all of these folks: at-risk youth, just as involved, refugees, asylum, special immigrants. And these are just some of the programs that we operate additionally in our workforce development umbrella. So, looking ahead, I've just started my position in April of this year, so it's a little under six months. And, you know, it's an iterative process as I continue to learn more about the organization. Obviously, what these look like may change. But for me and for us, we're looking to have that firm strategic plan so that we can begin that roadmap of really focusing on what those strategic initiatives are. While we're embarking more deeply into our diversity, equity, and belonging efforts, we know that there's longevity at SETA. We have lots of great people who've been doing great work for 20, 30, and even 40 years. But we also know that recruitment and retention has to be a high priority in order for us to welcome new folks coming into the workforce pipeline and engaging in that work. We want to make sure that we're relevant for future, right? And we stay innovative, obviously within our regulatory constraints, but still thinking outside of the box. And then, we look forward towards our 50th, which it's probably not too far off 2028, but we're starting to think about what that might look like for SETA. I'm happy to announce we have socials, and please follow us. We're on TikTok, Facebook, X, formerly known as Twitter, and Instagram, @SETA underscore SAC underscore SETA. So, I have my team here, happy to answer any questions for you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maldonado. Welcome, by the way, to the city council, and obviously relatively new to the position. I know I had the privilege of being out at your headquarters last week, and I felt the energy. It's terrific. So, let's... Do we have public testimony?
I have no speakers on the agenda.
You're not? So, let's hear from the members. I know I have a question, but I'll wait. Councilmember Guetta.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just wanted to thank Anita and her team for, you know, one, the great work that SETA continues to do, and then also the steps forward in leading the way here. And I really have to say, I appreciate your outlook and your creative thinking in how we can look at maximizing what is an agency that has a lot of constraints because of both the federal nature, some of the state funding, in this moving forward. I obviously want to highlight primarily the 70% allocation of what our funds are used for, and that's for Head Start. And for those on the council who weren't here at that time, the city took on the initiative to be... to create a task force on early childhood education, and then SETA took an active action to make and create the City-City Childcare Task Force, which now meets monthly and regularly to address our overall childcare needs because SETA is the largest childcare provider in the region, but not everyone can qualify for that. So, I think it's important that, you know, one, it's a tool that I think we can continue to better maximize and utilize when we're overlaying workforce development. If we don't address the childcare needs of folks, then they don't have the bandwidth to actually do the workforce training or to elevate themselves in a career or to advance themselves. And even with that, you know, the childcare sector has taken on some pretty significant challenges here. One area particularly has been on even childcare workers themselves staying into the workforce. And so, one, you know, request that I ask for this council is maybe part of our motion here is a direction on our state and federal advocacy on wages for childcare providers because many times our employees, correct me if I'm wrong, Anita, are also... Because of the caps on wages at the state and federal level, they fall within that income level where they're actually benefiting from the services, whether it be CalWorks or TANF. And we want them to elevate and move on from that. And so, I know it's one that we don't have direct control over. We, I think, have had some positive negotiations in the collective bargaining process. Can always do better, and as we collectively bargain, but I think they've been very positive. But I think that's the one area where I worry about being the largest provider of childcare. We need to be on the advocacy side of that effort. So, you know, Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and move the recommendation to accept the budget here, but I would say with the direction that our city, in its contract and lobbying efforts, even though it's already in our policy platform, take a stronger, more vocal role in that. SETA obviously cannot do that. It's restricted in their policy, in their funding, but us as a city, we can definitely engage in that because if our childcare workers who... and our educators who are taking care of our most important, you know, aspect of our life, our kids, aren't doing well, then our kids aren't going to do well. So, that's one thing that I heard loud and clear from the convening. It was great to be at the convening. And with that, Mr. Mayor, glad to move the item here.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Guetta. Good comments. Mayor Protem Talamontes.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll second the item. So, I'm a product of Head Start. I grew up in the country, and having my teacher come out to our mobile home in the middle of nowhere in Afton, California, was my favorite time of the month. I think she came out like two times a month, and we went over, like, we brushed our teeth, we did measurements, we talked about nutrition. And my Head Start teacher is actually the person that connected my parents with housing. We were able to apply for the CHIP Housing Program, which is where people build their own homes with a low interest rate from the federal government, kind of Habitat Humanity because it's similar. It was called CHIP Housing. And so, thanks to that teacher, my life entirely changed, and I am here where I'm at today. And Head Start, I think, plays such a large role in it. So, I wanted to share some photos of me as a Head Start kiddo.
Let's see.
Let's see if it pops up.
I'd say it's going to take another 30 seconds.
Okay.
We'll wait.
Yeah, SETA was fun. Or Head Start was fun.
Thank you for that. I just, while you're putting the photos up, I would just like to mention that our home-based program, we just actually ran the numbers, and there's 2,538 center-based services in the city. And it sounds like you had home-based services, which, you know, it's for parents who are, for whatever reason, they have transportation issues or barriers to take their children to the centers. We go to them, and we provide those same services. And it's really endearing work, and it's important work, and it really means a lot for those parents as well. So, thank you for sharing that.
Yeah. And maybe we can move on to... Okay, so, move Councilmember Vang, and then we should...
Okay, we'll come back to the picture. I think that's powerful. Councilmember Vang.
Thanks, Mayor. And thank you, Mayor Protem, for just sharing your lived experience of how programs like Head Start has been so transformative for so many people just here locally and across California. And so, I just want to echo my colleague, Councilmember Guetta. I really thank Anita and the entire leadership team for your heart and hustle and the work that you do day in, day out, and to our incredible staff, right, at SETA that's working with our hardest-to-reach families and communities and refugees and unhoused folks and our foster youth, right? Couldn't do it without our incredible staff. You know, I feel incredibly honored to be this year the chair of SETA, and we've gone through... We've gone through a lot, right? There's definitely some shakeup that has happened in SETA, and I'm just so proud of where we're at now. We're undergoing a strategic plan. We have new logo branding. We have finally hired a public information officer. And I also know on this city, on our end from the city, because we have a joint JPA, is that, you know, this council also wants to make some governance changes as well. I know that's in conversation, but I do feel like SETA is... Four more years from now, we'll be at our 50th year, and really looking back on, you know, the work that we've done, the legacy that we left behind, but how do we also ensure that we're still continuing to be relevant, right, and to be innovative? That's something that I think I've shared with staff, something I want to make sure. The fact that, like, we now just have a social media is great, but it's like, yo, we should have had a social media handle. We should have been out there for a long time. But it's because of your leadership, right, coming in and to really help make some positive improvements to the organization is really key. And so, I just want to give kudos to you and the entire staff just for the great work that you've done, and really looking forward to ensuring that SETA continues to move that path and be even better for our community. So, thank you, Anita, so much for your hard work.
Thank you, Councilmember Vang.
Thank you. Thank you all, and especially to the members who also serve so ably and passionately. I know as a regional member of the SETA Board... Oh, we have a picture. There it is. Hold on here.
Aww.
Which... On the right?
Yeah.
Look here, Karina. Wow.
And they service not just me, but my younger sister and my brother there, and I think we went on a field trip or something. There's a plant in my hand.
Mayor Protem. Head Start to Mayor Protem.
Thank you for sharing that.
No, that's beautiful. Thank you for sharing that. Can I... I just want to make a quick comment, more of an observation. The work here is so important and impactful. Sometimes I have felt with SETA, and maybe it's true of all of our joint powers agencies, that there's a little bit of a distance between the agencies themselves and the city. Like, tonight, for example, we're going to debate, and the chambers are going to be full of people who are going to be very passionate about how we divide up about $8 million in youth funding from Measure L. And then, I see a $141 million budget here with a lot of the same sort of categories that we may talk about tonight. Certainly, there are others as well. And I just wonder, and yet, in some ways, the SETA, the $141 million of direct investment is not necessarily seen as a city or a county investment, while we struggle, for example, to fund a lot of youth initiatives, violence prevention, all the things that we're going to talk about during that. I'm just wondering how we bring the agency closer to the city, aside from the fact that the members, you know, serve and serve so well and ably because... And maybe part of it is, your $141 million budget is in many ways governed by federal requirements. How you spend that money is like really, as a fiduciary, is really, really important to make sure that it is spent well and consistent with the law. And yet, I would wonder, and it's an open question, how much flexibility is there in this budget where SETA could actually be partnering directly with the city on some of the initiatives around youth, around workforce, around leadership that we can't necessarily fund out of our general fund? Have you thought about all that? Because it's a problem not just with SETA. It's... It's it's a problem with the other agencies as well.
But we do partner. We have multiple partnerships with the city, such as the Aggie Square. And I know that Roy can probably speak more to some of the partnerships that we have. But I think that certainly we can we can always do more. And that's typically on the workforce side, but certainly within the parameters of the Head Start side as well. And I'm we're definitely open to seeing where we fit into.
I appreciate it. But I mean, Measure L tonight, that debate is going to be our debate about this. But I just wonder even after the vote tonight and how it comes out, whether it might be a good idea for SEDA to be sitting down specifically with with YIPSY, with Sacramento Kids Kids First, to be thinking about how we take that city's Measure L contribution and we leverage it with some of the money that you have going here. Because I just feel like we're we're siloed in many ways. And I'd like to see that reduced if possible.
Well, we're certainly open to having those conversations. And I think Roy has something to contribute.
Roy?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So thank you for that, Mr. Mayor, and good afternoon, members of the council. So yeah, I'm Roy Kim, SEDA's Deputy Director for the Workforce Development Department. And you may or may not be aware, but SEDA's our SEDA team works very closely with the city's Economic Development Department and their team on different initiatives. We meet regularly on a weekly basis. I think sometimes your membership may may not be aware of all the partnerships that exist. But we're always happy to be a resource to the city, happy to have additional conversations. Certainly, we welcome them.
Got a thought on that, Mr. Jessa?
Only that I certainly would echo, you know, kind of what the executive director and Roy have both pointed out in terms of on the workforce and economic development. We do have a robust partnership, in part because the city has a robust economic development team. So it's a natural place to go to. I would probably say historically, we've had less kind of direct interaction in early childhood because that historically hasn't fallen under the domain of the city as much, although now we have kind of a kind of early childhood manager, et cetera. So I think the time is opportune, and especially with the work that's going on with Measure L. I don't know what form that would take, but I definitely think it's.
Or maybe some kind of a joint workshop between SEDA and and the city in some ways to be talking about this. Because just pure politic, just pure politics or communication here, this $141 million is helping so many people in the community, and yet, it's not seen, or at least that part of it is part of what the city does. And yet, the city is is a full partner here. And I I then we debate and are frustrated, and the community's frustrated, about all the shortages we have or the inability to be able to fund XYZ. In some ways, we are, at least indirectly, but it it doesn't all come together.
Hello, Board. I'm Karen Griffith. I am the Deputy Director of SEDA's Children and Family Services Department. And as Councilmember Guevara had had mentioned, I am part of the Sacramento City Task Force, and I am part of the National League of Cities team that met last week with Janine Cooper, with Parks and Rec, with our resource and referral and private providers. We have put together a city action plan that we are moving forward, looking at how we can hub information. We don't feel like there's one central place where parents and families can go to to get information about childcare and all the information about what is available. So we are working on that action plan for the city. In addition, we are the funder of Sacramento City Unified's Head Start Program, and we work with them in their grant planning to leverage all their funds of California funding, Title V, Title I funding, their ELOF Extended Learning Outcomes funding, so that we can do an overall picture of childcare in Sacramento. So I feel like thank you for putting in the position that Janine Cooper now leads because it has been a missing piece, and I'm really excited about the work that we are now having conversations about and available for any questions.
Okay, Eric.
Yeah, I was going to say, Mayor, you know, I I feel like on the on the early childhood education side, we're actually doing a lot more than we've ever done.
Okay, good.
And and by far, because we have Child Action, First Five, County Office of Fed, our City YIPSY Department, our Economic Development Department through, you know, when we one of the first things we did through our strategic action plan when we had the childcare convening in 2018, 2017, is we hired that position in economic development to look at how we grow our businesses in early childhood education as well. And so I think, you know, one, it's led to a couple of things. One, even a big grant where Los Rios Community College and the California Community College Foundation executed a significantly large study identifying what our major challenges are, which created the roadmap for us to be able to put in 1.2 million of the city's ARPA funding for workforce training, apprenticeship, and also childcare centers. So I I guess I would disagree with that point. But I would agree that, you know, for example, in Measure L conversation, Head Start can fund teachers, can fund, you know, a program managers, the leave-and-pay lease space, maintenance workers, to add more capacity for childcare. But the challenge we have are we can't use federal money for capital construction. We can't use money to retrofit spaces. Yet there's a conversation that we shouldn't use Measure L dollars on infrastructure or or equipment or space in our city facilities. And and that would go contrary to our ability to actually grow more Head Start facilities. So in one sense, to that point, yes. And in fact, our team, and I think you may hear about facility challenges, because if you're going to, you know, create more Head Start capacity, it isn't just finding any space. You got to find little toilets, little toilets that are much more expensive than even any big fancy toilet at a at a hotel to be able to make more childcare available. So I would just say that I think we're moving in a very positive direction, and it was very inspiring to see leaders from across the country saying, hey, here's where we are doing great things because we're all pulling together.
We've got the tiny toilet hookup.
Yeah, no, I I know the work is good and great. I just want to see as much of it integrated with the city as possible. That's all I was saying. Thanks.
We know that there's always more work to be done, and we're happy to to support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. We got a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. It passes. Okay, that's it. Do we have public testimony on items not on the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, I have one speaker, Maya Tome Sakanen.
We've got Mr. Bliss here. Did you sign up, Keon? Okay.
Hi, my name is Maya Tome, government name Sakanari. You can Google me. I'm the only one in the United States. At one time, I tried to canvas for Mr. Steinberg, and I just wanted to say thank you. It's been a rough year. It's an election year. There's a lot of things going on. I'm sociology major. I'm transferring after, don't make me cry, Mr. Steinberg. Sorry. I get very emotional. My mom really loves you, and she's in heaven now. But looking at the beautiful city council members, when I took Paul Frank of Sacramento City College, he taught me what leadership truly is. And I chose a managerial path at a restaurant. And I just don't think I I volunteered my time. I was a little bit of a party girl. Nicki Minaj was in San Francisco yesterday. You know, I really like her. I just wanted to say thank you, particularly to Ms. Vang of South Sacramento. I pretty much grew up off of Ortega Way, Mr. Jennings as well. Mr. Professor Frank taught me, know your district members. I still have his notebook from 2015. I am quite a fan of Ms. Lisa. Thank you. I would like to know a little bit more about Mrs. Talamontes or Ms. Talamontes. I like her history as the first historic or not the, what is it? The Hispanic, she's the first generation. So I know what a city clerk is, a city manager. It's just really nice to be up here. If I forgot Mr. Tao, I'm sorry. Everyone else, Ms. Maple, I think you're so pretty. And yeah, I really agree with your work as well. I'm getting more active, and I wanted to say really thank you to my best friend, Katie Valenzuela. I met her, Mr. Steinberg, at our Boulevard Park spaghetti dinner. And I free admission, it was great. I've been calling 311 occasionally and the police. And yeah, that's all I have to say.
Thank you for coming.
Absolutely. Okay.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Keon Bliss, and Mr. Bliss will be our final speaker.
Greetings, Mayor and City Council. On October 3, 2023, you, Mayor, Councilmember Valenzuela, and Councilmember Jennings submitted a letter requesting a joint workshop between the full city council and the Sacramento Community Police Review Commission. Our commission formally agreed to that joint workshop on October 9, 2023. Since last year, the commission has incorporated the joint workshop into our approved 2024 work plan. We met with all with you all to discuss your ideas for how to address the deficiencies and recommendations identified by the city auditor on March 19, 2024. The commission has discussed this workshop twice in this last year, on January 8 and June 10. And we have submitted our feedback to you verbally as well as in writing for your consideration as we go into this workshop. We are approaching one year since this discussion was put into motion. I have sent emails about it, and I have yet to receive a response from your staff members. So I ask you all here today, what is the status of the joint workshop between the city council and the Community Police Review Commission? What are the proposed dates being considered by city council and city staff? If there has been no further discussion since August 15, when we last when this was last raised, or no dates have been proposed to you all, I would request, and along with the commission, this meeting be scheduled during the month of October, which, based on the city council-approved meeting calendar, we do not have a public meeting approved for that month. I request your timely response to this matter as soon as possible. Our commissioners have been waiting, and unfortunately, we just lost one of our commissioners who had to resign for personal reasons. And this has been a pressing issue that we have been struggling with and been frustrated with for a number of years. So I would love to get this on the books so that we can clear this out. Thank you.
All right, council ideas and questions. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you. Yeah, since this is a council meeting and not a housing authority meeting, Mr. Assistant City Manager, sorry, you're not the one I thought would be in the chair today, so you're going to have to relay the message. You know, I made a request back in July for this council to get an update on violence prevention efforts after a couple of tragic shootings in my district. And after talking to Councilmember Jennings, I think after last weekend and the just horrible events across our districts that impacted several young people under the age of 24 across our city and their families, would really like to see that workshop scheduled post haste. If not in the next two weeks, then as soon as possible after that. I think we need to hear from our police department and our office of violence prevention about what they're doing, the changes that have been made over the last couple of years, because this clearly is an unacceptable trend that we're seeing on our streets. And I think I I'm sure most of my colleagues agree that we'd like to really evaluate how we're doing in that space and consider some potential ideas for moving forward in a more safe manner.
I will convey to the city manager.
Thank you. And I hope Mr. Mayor will maybe add this to your list with the city manager for October. Thank you.
I will. Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Mayor. If there's nobody, I'd like to close out this meeting.
Yes, of course.
Not to take away, I think all of us express the sentiments of five innocent lives were lost this weekend. And I think it behooves us to end our 2 o'clock meeting in their memory. I know specifically Colby James Tevis, who was the first individual who was murdered this weekend out on J Street, was a 2020 grad of Endercombe High School. He was a football star. He was at San Jose State in his senior year in communications. I attended his vigil with his family, friends, and community members last night. They are well-known in Natomas, and so much so that several of his teachers from Endercombe High School showed up because he made such a huge impact on them. He was a good kid. He was a good young man, celebrating his older sister's birthday of where his life was tragically ended. And unfortunately, his death is connected to other family members I know who have lost their son to violence as well. And this is a trend from the 12-year-old, the young lady, and the the men who have lost their lives this weekend. I think we should adjourn in their memories.
I agree. It's very timely and in the memory of five lives lost. And may I just expand that to say all innocent victims, all victims of gun violence in our community beyond the meeting. Oh, we've got a go ahead. I'll adjourn in a moment.
Unfortunately, I need to adjourn to a closed session, and we can take that back up, so I apologize. We do have a special meeting closed session agenda at 4:00 PM. The one item is pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 for a matter pertaining to negotiations with recognized employee organizations, Sacramento City Exempt Employees Association, Sacramento Police Officers Association, International Union of Operating Engineers, Stationary Engineers, Local 39, Sacramento Area Firefighters, Local 522, Sacramento Sierra Building and Construction Trades Council, Plumbers and Pipe Fitters, Local 447, Auto Marine and Specialty Painters, Local 1176, Western Council of Engineers, International Association of Machinists and Aerospace Workers. The purpose is to confer with the city's chief negotiators, Shelley Bakes Robinson and Aaron Donato.
Okay. Thank you again, Councilmember Kaplan. We are adjourned.